I don't even remember. Not even sure when it is a continuation from. But it was an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.1.5.1b to construct a 48 inch wide pathway, replacing the existing one for safety and proper access to the rear of the property, which is in relation to a proposed deck, which is within the side setback. And the board was Manny, Will, Mick, Trevor, and Jan. I will substitute for Mick. I don't think we need to worry about the Mullen rule because the applicant has asked to withdraw this application. So I need a motion to withdraw the application.
So moved.
I shall move without prejudice.
Okay, yes, without prejudice. And and Jan will second, I guess, in that case. Yep. And all in favor. Sharon, I, Manny.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Will.
Hi.
And Trevor. Okay. All right. So go. So now, the next case is 2125 Outer Cape Health Services Incorporated, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.2 and 8.4.2 for the addition of a drive-through window in connection with the existing pharmacy use. This will be familiar to you because we did hear this case once before, but this is a new application for reasons of expediency. Basically, this is a new application so as to not tie itself up in court. And so the board for this will be myself and Manny and Trevor and Will and Rita.
No, I need to recuse.
Oh, no, that's right. You need to recuse yourself. Never mind. Andy, Andy and Rita. Okay. And Ms. Cox from North Carolina?
From North Carolina today, not my home in Wellfleet. Good evening, Board members. For the record, my name is Lisa Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan and Fish and here this evening on behalf of the applicant. Joining me this evening is Pat Nadel, who's the CEO of Outer Cape Health Services, waving our hand, Alan Hall, who's the facilities director for Outer Cape Health Services, and Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering is on as well. I intend on being very brief this evening, given that you've essentially heard this request with a prior application, but obviously if the board has questions, we're happy to try and answer them. So we're here this evening to present what should, as the chair indicated, be a very familiar application to the board for special permit relief in connection with Outer Cape Health Services' proposed drive-through window to be used in connection with its existing pharmacy. As was noted in the ad, because a drive-through window is not an expressly allowed use under the zoning bylaw, it requires a special permit under the sections that the chair referenced previously. You, Will, I think all of you were on the board previously when this was heard in July, but as you'll recall, the project team, along with my colleague Jeannie Campus, who's out of the country, which is why I'm filling in for her this evening, and Randy Hart, our traffic engineer from VHB, as well as Outer Cape and Coastal Engineering, were back before you in July with a nearly identical application, which was thoroughly reviewed, discussed, and unanimously approved by the board. However, subsequent to your approval and issuance of the decision, a neighbor appealed that your approval to the Superior Court based upon one of the conditions that the board had included in the decision, which was requiring a no-left turn sign at the northerly exit. Without knowing where the sign was to be located, the neighbor, who I believe is also on the call this evening, was concerned that the site could serve to prohibit vehicles traveling down Old Kings Highway from making a left onto Route 6. And so after working with your town council and council for the neighbors, we determined that the most efficient way to resolve the litigation would be for us to seek a new decision of the board based on a slightly revised site plan, which was submitted as part of the application for this appeal. The revised plan that was submitted shows the location of the proposed left turn sign, which therefore implements condition two of your prior decision. I would also note that the revised site plan also includes, and is responsive to the board's condition one of the decision, showing the additional stanchions. Importantly, and you should have this in your package, with this revised plan, the neighbor freely supports this application and submitted a letter in support of this current application. So we're here this evening with essentially an identical proposal that you approved in July, but with the additional detail that I just mentioned on the site plan. Before tonight's hearing, and because I wasn't at the hearing in July, I did watch the video. And so, as I mentioned earlier, I know this was discussed at length. I think all of your questions were answered and you approved the application. And so rather than go through the standard and describe the property and the proposal, again, I think what I'll do is just pause here. We did describe everything in the application materials that we submitted, so they are also part of the record for this particular application. And then I guess we'll just try and answer any questions you may have at this stage. And again, our whole team is here if we can be of assistance. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cox. And I will read the letter because I'm not sure everybody got it from the Lindberghs. It says, Dear ladies and gentlemen, we own property located at 2020 Old Kings Highway in Wellfleet and about the Outer Cape Health Services property located at 2700 Route 6. As you may know, we filed an appeal from the special permit originally issued by your board under a decision dated July 22, 2021. This appeal was not filed in opposition to the issuance of the special permit for the drive-through window. We had no objection to the addition of the drive-through window. Our primary concern was the fact that the location and purpose of the sign required in condition two of the original decision was not clearly spelled out in the decision and would be determined at some point after the decision had become final. We were concerned that the location and purpose of the sign, as proposed, would interfere with our rights, particularly the right to exit from the public road entitled Old Kings Highway onto Route 6. Unfortunately, the statutory notice of the prior proceedings must have gone astray. Had we received this notice, we could have submitted our concerns to the board, and perhaps this problem could have been avoided. In any event, we wish to express our full support for the issuance of an amended special permit, provided it is based on the plan attached as Exhibit A, and will make clear that the sign required by condition two, which will read "No Left Turn Onto Route 6", will be located as shown on Exhibit A, and will apply only to traffic and customers of Outer Cape Health Services exiting from the property of Outer Cape Health Services, and not to vehicles traversing the Outer Cape Health property from Old Kings Highway. That is the letter we have. Okay. Is there anyone from the board, from the audience who wants to speak to this? So you can hit the raise hand button if you want to. Seeing none, I will go to the board. Manny, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think the new site plan shows exactly where the signs would be, and that's good enough for me.
Jan?
No questions.
Trevor?
With Manny, I don't think we need to discuss the... Well, actually, that's a question for you, Sharon. Do we need to discuss the whole case again, or can we just?
No, we don't need to discuss the whole case again. We can simply talk about the change.
Right. I think the changes are are fine. They're what we looked for, what we asked for, and happy to move forward.
Okay. Rita?
And so by the people involved very well, and I don't have any questions.
And Andy?
No questions.
And Al?
Wow. I'm the only one who's going to have a little bit of a question. I have no objection at all to the new positioning of the sign. But I would point out that making a left turn from Old Kings Highway onto Route 6, crossing sets of double yellow lines, is essentially crossing a divided highway. And I would also point out that you know, requiring people using Outer Cape to not make a left turn, but and allowing people using Old Kings Highway to make a left turn is a double standard. I mean, it doesn't make any sense because you're going to have people, you know, turning left at what is a pretty dangerous intersection. I've seen cars dart out of Old Kings Highway across those double yellow lines, and I find it to be, you know, a safety issue. So and I think that's why the board initially, you know, went for that. So I do object, you know, to it on those grounds.
All right. Um, I think Ms. Lindberg has a question, has a hand up. So I think I will let her speak since she is the abutter. Ms. Lindberg? Ms. Lindberg, would you like to speak?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks. So I would just like to point out that the Outer Cape Pharmacy and the Vet have a light, and people can take a left from the light. So it's really not impeding their ability to go right or left.
Thank you. Okay. And presumably, we're going to get better.
But nonetheless, the sign at that exit is saying, folks exiting onto Old Kings Highway cannot turn left. And yet, people using Old Kings Highway who live on Old Kings Highway are able to turn left. And I find that ridiculous.
Yep.
Probably going to do what they're going to do regardless of what the sign says.
Right. But, but you know, it's illegal.
The answer that I got from the police chief when I asked this question was that it is not advisable, but it is not illegal. So therefore, the Lindberghs have that, you know, caveat from the police chief. It's not advisable. And if you remember, the main reason we ended up with this condition, I will confess, is because when I did the site visit and tried to go back out that way and was getting ready to make my right turn, a person who was trying to make a left turn from that got, had two lines of cars coming at him, and in panic, backed up almost into me, not paying any attention to the fact that I was sitting there. So for me, it was a very strong issue. Nonetheless, I am okay with this way of indicating it with the understanding that it is inadvisable to make a left turn there in any event.
And if I could just interject, Madam Chair, I think, you know, the board is, has an application by Outer Cape before it. And so the location of the sign mitigates any impact that would be caused by Outer Cape, which is what we're obligated to do.
Exactly. Yes. Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Before, I guess I do have, it's not a question, but it's sort of a concern. And the concern is that if the Outer Cape traffic is going to turn right only, and somebody's coming out of Old Kings Highway and has the right to turn left, I don't, I'm just concerned that perhaps the person who's turning from the Outer Cape location may think that the Old Kings Highway person is also barred from a left and will take a right, and in fact, won't. So there's a possibility of a collision there. I don't know what else could be done. If I'm not, maybe I'm confusing things, but if I'm, I'm understanding this correctly, and I think I am, I think there's that possibility, however remote it is.
Has it come?
I don't think there's anything the applicant can do other than put it out.
No, no, no. I understand that. And that's why, that's why.
The applicant can be responsible for everyone's bad traffic decisions.
No, I understand that. I'm just making, I'm making a point. I'm not, I don't object to this. I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. And Will is his hand up, but Will's not allowed to comment because he's recused himself. So Will, you need to put your hand down. I can't be calling on you to advocate for Outer Cape Health when you're recusing yourself from the board. It just starts to get messy.
Okay, Sharon, my comment was as a citizen and a former attorney, you know, Old Kings Highway is a public road.
Right. Exactly.
I don't think, I don't think we, I don't think the zoning board of appeals has a right to change the direction that someone can turn off a public road. I mean, Elijah can probably.
No, that is absolutely true. And in fact, that is what the chief told me. And as I say, that's why the chief said, this is, you know, it may not be advisable, but it is not illegal, and therefore, it is not in our jurisdiction to rule on, on what people do coming out of Old Kings Highway.
But not on the applicant's property at that point.
Right. And they're off the applicant's property, and presumably are not the applicant. And the other thing is that, as you said, Trevor, the applicant has done everything the applicant can do to mitigate the problem. So the applicant isn't creating a problem here. Right.
Can we move this forward?
Yes, we can move this forward. I need a motion to move to findings. Okay. And I need a second. Rita's seconds. Okay. They will sound familiar to you, actually. Outer Cape Health Services, application for a special permit pursuant to section 5.2 and 8.4.2 of the Wellfleet bylaws for the addition of a drive-through window in connection with the existing pharmacy use. The lot is in the commercial district. The property, which contains approximately 1.24 acres of upland, is currently improved with a single commercial structure built in approximately 1960 per the assessors' records. The applicant seeks to add a drive-through window to its existing year-round pharmacy on the property to improve access to medicines, particularly for disabled patrons or guardians of children, and to minimize human interaction. The use conforms with the objectives of the commercial district as stated in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2. There was no objection to the project from the police, fire, or DPW. There were two letters in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the project. The use contributes to the diversity of services available. The board has found pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the property is suitable for the proposal, and traffic patterns have been redesigned to ensure that all queuing will remain on the property. The low-intensity year-round use will contribute to a diversity of services. The proposal will have no impact on the existing building footprint or parking areas. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. And I have amendments to the conditions, but I think we need to vote on the findings first. That, am I right on that net, Trevor? Or should I be adding that? Do you want to hear the conditions first?
Well, I'll move the findings with the following conditions.
Okay. All right. Then let me read the conditions. Ballards or stanchions shall be placed along the entire length of the proposed lanes striping along the south side of the building, where the drive-through window will be located, as shown on the site plan, since they've added them. And a no-left turn sign will be placed, as shown on the site plan.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I move that with those conditions.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Any seconds? All in favor? It's Trevor?
Wait, look, I think Jan has something.
Instead of saying just the site plan, because there's, well, never mind, the other site plan doesn't count because it's in a different special permit.
Right. I am going to put the date on there, though.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, I agree with you. It should be, as on the site plan dated such and such. Yeah. But it's the one we'll stamp. Okay. All in favor. Trevor?
Hi.
Andy? No. Yeah, yes, Andy is on this board. Rita?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
And myself. Hi. And having accepted the findings, all in favor of, I need a motion to approve the special permit.
So moved.
Okay. And second?
Second.
And he's the second. All in favor. Trevor?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
And Sharon? Hi. All right. Okay. I think we're done. I think you can go back to North Carolina. All of you. And I will get those findings cleaned up and gone. All right. Now, of course, I've got to find my agenda.
Thank you very much.
Good night now. Good night now.
Thank you.
All right. Now, tell me, I've lost my agenda one more time. We have Kanone. And I'm not seeing Ben, which is, here it is on here, which is a surprise to me. I will read, I will read Kanone, and then, but if it's, I don't know, it's unusual for us not to have Ben by this point.
Yeah.
All right, I'll read it, and then maybe he'll, he'll magic, there he is, no, magically appear. 2126 Kanone, 41 Pamet Point Road, map three, parcel six, application for a special permit pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, C40A S6 and Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.1.5b and 6.1.52b, to alter a non-conforming dwelling structure on a non-conforming lot in the National Seashore Park District, zoning district, by demolishing the dwelling and an accessory garage structure, and building a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage and a national seashore permit pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.24a and b, to exceed the maximum National Seashore Park gross, gross something area, gross footage area or something, under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.4.3.1, and to increase the non-conforming structure of, nature of the structure within the setback. And I need, and I don't know who's speaking to this. Is anyone speaking to this? Speak now. That's very strange.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think we can go ahead and go. So I do see Tim Malone here.
Yeah, well, I have a suggestion again.
Good.
Is we drop, we drop down to the
The business?
The court order, and hasn't shown up by then, we can, we can table his motions a month.
Yeah.
I mean, table his application a month.
Right. Okay. Sounds good, Will.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm Barbara Kanone.
Yes.
And my husband and I are here. And we know the application, and we've seen what was put in it, and we've discussed it with Ben.
So do you want to go ahead and present it, Mrs. Kanone?
I don't know that I could present it, but if there is anything that you would like us to say about the property or anything.
Well, we can certainly we can certainly sort of walk you through this. What you need to do is just tell us what you're doing and why.
Okay. Well, first of all, the property has been in the Kanone family for close to 50 years. Garrett's father was a Wellfleet, full-time Wellfleet resident from 79 until 2000. We have both recently retired and thought that we would come down there and retire to Wellfleet, but found that the house was really kind of unsuitable and uninhabitable for a couple to live full-time. It's, the cost to repair or to remodel it would.
Wait a minute, you know, Mrs. Kanone, hang on a second. I need to set the board for this, and I did not do that. I apologize. The board will be Will and Al and myself and Manny and Jan. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So the, you know, to remodel or to repair it exceeded the costs for the value of the home. So we asked to build a one-level, age-in-place residence for my husband and myself, and we hired an architect to design this house that would meet our needs and fit on the site at, you know, in the same place that the original cottage is, so that we weren't kind of, you know, digging up closer to Route 6 or going the other way. We were trying to fit it in the, you know, that one spot, that flat spot. We tried to stay within the, you know, the setbacks of the current house and garage that are currently there. The house that will be built is going to be, or we want to build, is a traditional Cape-style house, modest in size, and will be built according to today's codes and standards with upgraded septic wells, materials, and high-energy efficiency. We have been and will continue to use local businesses to complete the project. And we would like to keep this as a family home for my husband and myself, and then pass it on to our daughter. We have two daughters, and pass it on to them in the future. And we just would like you to consider the application, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You did a nice job. Okay, we have, I know of no letters from abutters. Having visited the property, I think we all know that you don't have very many abutters who could write any letters. Except maybe for the deer.
They don't have any abutters.
But they do have a letter from the seashore, and the seashore says, "The seashore has no comments on this submission due to parcel B and defers to the ZBA." Thank you. So okay, so Will, what questions do you have?
No, I did have a question at first about the rear setback, but I see it's a 35-foot foot setback. So the most you could do is maybe move the building back another foot, so it's 35 feet. But it's so close that I have no, no questions regarding this application.
Thank you. Al?
No questions regarding this application. I think yeah, having gone out there, I think it would be a real improvement to build it. No, I mean, I don't mean to.
No, we know what you mean.
I don't mean to insult your house. No.
Sorry.
No, no offense. Take it.
Manny?
I'm sorry, Will, but I think the back setback is 36.6. Isn't that it? Yes. Yeah. And I think they require 35.
Yep.
So they meet the setback. Oh, no, no, no. I'm saying you could move it, you could get some more in the front if you move the house back a foot and a half. That, you need some room to work. Oh, I don't. You know. But I have no problem with the application. But it does meet the side setbacks, the front setback. They're going back about two feet away from that, so that's even better. They've come up with a new septic system. I couldn't find anything that was negative about this. So I would be much in favor of this.
Thank you. Jan?
Um, I have a couple of quick questions. In Ben's vendor's narrative, he talks about 6.24.3, number three, about the electric telephone and cable and utility lines. So just so I understand, is the applicant requesting that they not have to bury those lines as they go from the pole to the house?
No, we didn't request that, but I guess it was noted that the, in that, on that road, I don't think any of them are underground. I think they're all overhead.
Again, that's the lines that go from the pole to your house.
Right.
You don't want to bury them. Is that not a building? Is that a requirement, Manny?
No, no. They can, they can do either or. My suggestion would be to bury them, of course, but you could do whatever you want.
Either way would be okay with us. We, you know, we have no problem either way.
And the other question I have, and Sharon threw you, maybe, maybe Manny or Trevor can answer this.
Right.
So when we figure livable floor space, there's a difference between a cellar and a basement, and I don't read plans particularly well, as you all know. Is this a cellar there building or a basement per our bylaw definition?
A basement.
So part of that basement would have to have been, any part that wasn't for heating, cooling, mechanical, and electrical equipment would have been, had to have been part of the calculation.
I don't think so.
Well, that's what says in the bylaw.
Well, let's hear, let's hear what the bylaw says.
It says basement areas other than those used exclusively for heating, cooling, mechanical, and electrical equipment necessary to the operation of the building.
Exactly. So the basement.
Exactly, so the basement is where, what holds the, this equipment.
Every.
So, right.
The whole, the whole basement?
Well, if you, if you, if you think about it and you're putting in, uh, like a hot air system. That pretty well runs throughout the basement. To all the supply lines and all that type of stuff.
Okay.
It, it can't be a finished basement.
I think for finishing a portion of the basement, it would count. And the distinction would be that even though it was below ground, it would count as livable floor area if it was finished.
Okay.
Right.
But we want one level.
They don't want a face, did it change that? Okay.
I guess the only other thing I was going to say is that, you know, I absolutely don't object to this at all and I think it'll, it'll be lovely and it'll improve the area. I just wish it, you weren't exceeding our National Seashore. Uh, gross, what is it, National Seashore?
Actually, they are.
I wish they weren't exceeding it because, you know, you're definitely exceeding by quite a bit, the, the fifty percent expansion guidelines of the seashore, that's all.
Hundred and eighty-six feet is what they're exceeding by, yeah, Ritha?
Um. I have no questions, I think. It looks feasible.
Okay, Andy?
I. The only issue was the, and I don't think it's the gross floor area, I think it's just the, the, the extent to which or the amount to which you can. Grow a house on, on a property in the seashore, that's, I think that's what you're talking about, Jan.
I'm talking about both of them, no, what I said was they're almost what, eight hundred feet over the fifty percent that the National Seashore would, would guidelines talk about, but under our. Bylaw.
Was worry.
There's still like a hundred and eighty-seven square feet over the maximum they can build on that size lot, so I wish they hadn't exceeded that as well.
So, to finish my thought. I agree with everybody, this will be a major improvement and. I don't think it will, you know, stick out.
No.
The intention of the seashore guy rule was to limit the extent to which you could. Build a house on the seashore or improve a house. And. We're not enforcing it. And the seashore doesn't seem to care. And that's all I have.
Can I say something? I think, I think it was meant for areas that had houses that were closer together. I mean, they have a lot and they've paid taxes on this lot that's over forty-two thousand. Uh, square feet. And I believe that, that's. That area is what the area. That should be counted as. Not, um. I don't know, but anyway. But that's my feeling. And this is a unique piece of property, there's nothing around it. Anyway.
I agree. I cycle up that road or down that road all the time, the other day I drove over there, but my point is. I, I don't know if I agree with you Manny, but I don't know what the intent was of limiting the amount of expansion in the seashore. I mean, I think I, I think I have a pretty good idea, in this case, I don't think we need to enforce it, but we aren't, I mean, we don't need to. Yes, we don't need to enforce it.
That's right.
But it is, and.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trevor?
Well, I don't, I don't have any, any comments or issues with it.
Okay, have I been around, um, yeah, I, I was, I wrestled with the expansion over the seashore question too, Jan. And I guess part of it is that I, I think of that and I think of the houses that become monsters. And this seems like a modest sized house to me and even the seashore said there is, the fact that parcel B over there would be conservation land. And is sort of a mitigating factor was the other thing that weighed in for me as well. That they really are not. As Andy says, we're not enforcing it, but I'm not sure that we need to enforce it in this particular case. But it's sort of where I am on this one.
Especially when the seashore itself has no.
Yeah, especially when the seashore itself has no, and in the seashore. Uh, seashore says no comment, it means they have no objection, they don't say I have no objection, but they never say no comment, but. So, all right, do you, you'd like to go to findings?
I'll move for findings.
Okay. And Al will second it, all right, all right, this is an application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general law, C four oh four A, section five and. Wellfleet zoning by law, six point one point five. And six point one point five two B to alter a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot in Seashore Park District by demolishing the dwelling and accessory garage structure and building a new single family dwelling with an attached garage. And a National Seashore Park permit, special permit pursuant to wellfleet zoning by law, six point two four A B to exceed the maximum. NSGFA, I'm not even going to try to say what those are, under wellfleet zoning by law, five point four point three point one and to increase the non-conforming nature of the structure within the setback. One, the lot is in the National Seashore Park District, two, the dwelling is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been built in nineteen fifty, according to the assessor's office. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate lot area, thirty-six thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet where a hundred and thirty, thirty thousand six hundred and eighty square feet is required. And intrusion into the front setback, twenty-eight point eight feet where fifty feet is required. The applicant proposes to construct a structure that will be non-conforming as to front yard setback, but that will be less non-conforming than the existing structure. Thirty-one point five feet proposed as composed, compared to twenty-eight point eight feet currently. The new dwelling will be two thousand five hundred and one square feet, which exceeds the National Seashore Park gross floor area maximum for the property under wellfleet zoning by law, five point four point three point one. The calculated allowable NSPFGA, GFA for the property is two thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet, the applicants are asking for an additional hundred and eighty-six square feet. The applicants are requesting that their parcel on the north side of Pamet Point Road, which is a vacant six thousand one hundred. And twelve square foot lot be included in the calculations, which would allow them an additional hundred ninety-six square feet or ten square feet more than the proposed project. The applicants propose to donate this parcel to conservation. There will be no change in use, there will be no increase in use, the use conforms to, with the objectives of the National Seashore Park District as stated in wellfleet zoning by law, three point two. There were no appearances or correspondence in support of or, or opposition to the application, the National Seashore. Park had no comment on the project. The roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the project. The board has found that pursuant to wellfleet zoning by law, eight point four point two point three. Scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, reasonable efforts have been made to minimize the visibility of parking and service areas from public roads. Traditional public access to or along the shoreline is has, is not, hasn't, has, is not. Concerned here. The proposal will be, not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. After considering the nation, the district objectives for the National Seashore Park District as provided for in the wellfleet zoning bylaws regarding alteration. Of non-conforming structures and lots and for granting of a National Seashore Park special permit, that's what I have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I believe when you said front setback. Twenty-eight point eight, but it should be thirty-one point five feet instead.
Yeah, the existing is twenty, right now with that house is twenty-eight point eight and they're going to go to thirty-one point five.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to make it better.
Yes.
Will?
I, I, I'm in favor, I vote in favor of those findings.
Okay, you have your hand up, that's why I asked.
Oh, that's, my mind is gone, you know?
Quite all right. I don't like to miss a hand, okay, um. Anything, any change, other changes to the findings? Okay, um, in that case, I need a motion to accept the findings.
We approve the findings.
All right, and I need a second.
Second.
Who's on this board, is Al on this board, can I let him second this?
Yes.
Yes, you're good, okay, good. I have too many pieces of paper here, very good, you've seconded it, all in favor, Al?
I.
Will?
I.
Annie?
Hi.
And Jan?
Hi.
And myself, hi, now I need to move to grant the special permit based on the findings.
I will move to grant the special permit.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, Will seconds, all in favor, Al?
I.
Myself, I, Manny?
I.
Jan?
I.
Will?
I.
Yeah, that's everybody, okay, good, congratulations, Mrs. Canoni, you did a very nice job.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, make Ben, make Ben give you a discount.
Thank you so much.
I don't know, I'm worried, a little worried about him because he never, that never happens, so that's a little, little concerning, but. Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Sharon, I'll send, I'll send Ben an email tonight.
Yeah, say, you know, it's, we just worry, I, I don't mind, she did just fine, but, you know, it's just worrying.
I had some other tough questions I wanted to, you know, get Ben with.
I know, you want to hit Ben with them, it's just not the same without Ben here. Well, I wanted to say, hey, Ben, you finally brought us a project, project we didn't hate, but, you know. So he sort of missed his chance, yeah. Okay, I'm going to call this one and then I'm going to give you a little bit of instruction about what we're doing here. And hello, Mr. Malone, it's been a while since I've seen you, but it's nice to see you again.
Here, here, on behalf of the applicant, I believe is also in the audience, as well as my attorney, Peter Freeman. Go through a quick summary of what we don't, got going on here.
Okay, um, let me, let me just, whoa, 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 just a minute, Mr. Freeman, just, just let me. Wait, wait, let me call the case, let me set the board. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
What's that, a recording?
I don't know what it is.
For both of those uses. We have some parking out front as well as some drive under contracted.
And can we mute everybody except the board members?
Yeah, let's mute.
Yeah, I, I apologize, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Pe, Peter Freeman, I apologize. I have two hearings and as luck would not have it, they were being called at exactly the same time. So the engineer just started at the Bourne Planning Board and I am with you folks, so I apologize, I forgot that you were hearing the chatter from the town of Bourne, sorry.
All right, okay, that's fine, all right, so let me just set what's going on here with the board, okay, here's the business, I'm going to just say. Pursuant to the Order of Remand issued by the Barnstable Superior Court. On September tenth, um, in the matter of Bruce Stephen Burney et al versus wellfleet zoning. Vowing Board et al. Is discuss the request of the Community Housing Resource Incorporated dated September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one to modify the comprehensive permit issued for one twenty Payne Hollow Road. And determine whether such modifications are substantial or insubstantial. And a copy of the requested modifications is on file with the building department and the, and the zoning by law, zoning board of appeals secretary at the. DPW office located at two twenty W Main Street, Mr. Freeman, I'm afraid you're going to have to mute yourself just a little bit longer. Um, just so we don't hear the other case, because we don't want to, we don't want to eavesdrop on it. So board, what has happened here is that the parties, this is Payne Hollow. Which, for those of you who have ever read Bleak House, is sort of like Charndice versus Charndice. It started fifteen years ago. Um, it came before us in twenty seventeen, I explained to. Town council that I could not possibly reconstruct the last, the, the former board, not only did I not know what the former board was, but. Three of them are probably, at least three of them, I believe are dead, so we cannot go back with your old board. Town council says this is not a public hearing, therefore the Mullen Rule does not apply, therefore the board can simply be. Trevor, myself, Manny. Will and Andy. Substituting for Mick, the, the question before us is, do we find the modifications in this special permit substantial or insubstantial? If we find them insubstantial, we can make a motion to that effect. And the permit goes forward, if we find them substantial, then we have to have a special. A, a can, a second public hearing on the differences in those. So that's the, that's where we are with this, we, we end up at the end of this with one, with a motion one way or the other. Depending on whether we think these are substantial or insubstantial and the courts don't give us a lot of guidance on this. In terms of what, what is defined as substantial versus insubstantial, so you have to just. Hear this and see what you think, so with that, I will let Mr. Freeman begin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and again for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Loggrip and Yamathport, and again apologies for the crosstalk. In a nutshell, the main presentation will be by Mr. Malone and our engineer, John O'Reilly. As my letter that I sent in requesting this. Meeting to approve changes that we believe are insubstantial, results from a settlement as has been outlined, there was an appeal by a Butters. That has been resolved by a settlement and it addressed the things that had been of concern such as the. Uh, grade of the driveway entrance, which is now ten percent, uh, it had been a little more previously. We have privately not asking the zoning board to get into this with any modification related to the water wells, but we have addressed that in our settlement agreement to the satisfaction of the. Uh, the former, well, currently the plaintiffs, when it'll be dismissed, the former plaintiffs, our neighbors, I should say. And likewise, some additional screening and fencing to increase buffers for folks on the. Left, I'll say, I forget which geographical direction of the driveway going up. And so there were very slight changes to the, uh, to the building plans themselves as, as a result. Uh, and Mr. Malone and Mr. O'Reilly, as I said, will show you the plans and explain in a little more detail. And in terms of insubstantial, there are guidelines only in the regulations, it is true that there's not any hard and fast. Uh, regulations, which is actually very intentional so that there is some. Input and, and discretion on the part of a zoning board, as your chairwoman said. In a nutshell, though, there's generally a ten percent standard, typically the examples and the guidelines in the regulations. Are that if there are an increase of bedrooms of more than ten percent or the number of, the number of units. None of which is the case here, we're not changing any of those components. Other aspects in terms of the site, ten, ten percent or more, and nothing happening here, and in fact, because it's by agreement with the Butters. The neighbors, we really think that it merits being approved as insubstantial. And then, as has been said, these plans would be the, the plans approving these changes that would become part of the comprehensive permit. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ted and to Mr. O'Reilly. And I apologize again, I'll try to remember which one I should keep on and which one I should mute, so thank you very much.
It's hard to do too many things at once, yeah, okay.
Okay, um, nice to see you all and I'm happy to be back. To get this moving forward again. I also wanted to mention that Jessica Snare from my team, the architect, i- is here, the, the presentations will be. From me and John O'Reilly, Jessica's here to respond to any questions that you might have about the plans, but. Basically, the, the biggest objection that we had to. Address of a Butters was the. Grade of the driveway. Originally, you have proved it at twelve percent. Originally, you approved it at 12%, and the desire to reach the 10% grade, which had been recommended by the fire chief, was motivated everything that we have come up with today. Basically, in order to achieve a 10% grade, the roadway had to be lengthened, because the elevations, the, the spot elevations where the housing is to be located, needing to be reached by the road. Basically, the road had to just be lengthened through doing some wider curves, and what that ended up doing was needing the relocation of the two clusters of buildings to different locations, somewhat different locations on the site. We achieved that by basically moving the one cluster of buildings across, further from Payne Hollow Road and back further into the site. And it's now coming up the road. Instead of it being on the right, it's now on the left. It's still four units in that cluster, three one-bedroom units and four, I'm sorry, and one two-bedroom unit. It's basically the same, the only difference in the plans, those were submitted as the original CAD plans. They were just re-lettered because they're, they're basically flipped. So Unit A was, became D. And so A through D is basically what was in front of you before. It's now on the other side of the street. The curvature of the road, then, the, and the location of that building, that's basically the identical building, is where we used to have a circle turnaround. And instead of the circle turnaround, we have extended the drive further back in the site and have a emergency vehicle turnaround in an L format. And place the other four units, two two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms, which have just been reconfigured because of how they, there, it's the same unit mix, but they are reconfigured because of their placement on a sloped portion of the site. It's, I think that if this, all of these changes also required where we, we still have two septic systems. They had to be relocated to accommodate where the road was and where the buildings were. But we've basically been able to preserve the front part of Payne Hollow Road with being undisturbed. And the road meets the 10% grade that was requested. We've moved our well location to the rear, back by the turnaround. And one thing that John O'Reilly pointed out, the firefighting water storage tanks is not shown on this plan, and I'll let John also explain where that would be located. But basically, our lot coverages and building coverages, pavement coverage, all those things are very much within the 10% measure. Some of the building coverage was actually reduced because the second bedroom on the northeast cluster, those are now have, are bedroom and bathroom for the second bedroom are on the lower level, using the topography. So, and it's all still fully accessible and visitable, which had been an objective of ours and the, the towns from the early stages. So that's all I have to say, and I'm gonna turn it over to John.
Thank you. Hi, John.
Good evening. For the record, my, my name is John O'Reilly. I'm principal with JM O'Reilly and Associates. Ted did a very nice job in addressing the changes. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. Couple of the changes specifically regarding drainage and grading. Yes, the, the road was originally designed for 12, was approved at 12. And by flip-flopping the road and the first group of buildings as shown on the, the approved plan, we were able to lengthen the road, extend the curve, to get the grade at 10% coming off, coming off the Payne Hollow. The, the other thing we've done is we've addressed the drainage. The drainage, as it's proposed, does meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook policy, and that it's designed for 25-year storm, and that the amount of current off-site flow from drainage is, is not going to be exacerbated by this development, where we're, we're controlling our runoff. And we're also treating our runoff, implementing storm scepters, which is a proprietary device that, that acts almost as a rain garden or, or grass swale. Here, we really don't have the topography for that, so we've opted to do, to use storm scepter units. The septic systems are, are designed to meet Title V and Wellfleet sanitary requirements. There's no variant, variants needed or waivers needed. The road is still 20 feet wide. The hammerhead at the end of the road is very similar to the hammerhead that was proposed and, and adopted at the Habitat Sat, Habitat Site on Old Kings Highway. This will allow a, an emergency vehicle to turn around and then come back down the road towards Payne Hollow. With regards to the, the coverages, I do have a general site coverage narration on the left side of the plan. And the, as, as, as Ted said, the, the area, the building coverage, basically percentage-wise, stayed the same at 3.8. The pavement area increased by about 1,800 square feet, still remaining within that, that 10% criteria. And actually, the open space, both the, both the revegetated, the graded and revegetated, as well as the undisturbed, is within 1% of the approved percentages on the, on the approved plan. And then with regards to the fire storage tank or the water storage tank, it could be placed either on, to the north of Unit D, just adjacent to the road, or to the south of Units E and G. And what I would plan to do, and, and hopefully the board would agree, is certainly get the exact location approved by the fire department prior to moving forward with it. At that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the, the board may have.
All right, I think we're then ready for questions. So Manny, do you have questions about this one?
I don't have any questions. I'm just glad that we moving forward with this. It's been a long time.
It's been a long time. Dan?
I was just gonna say, for the record, is there not also fencing that's new on this plan?
Yes.
So we get that out there as well. Six-foot stockade fencing.
Yeah, it's, we have several locations of fencing on the western sideline, adjacent to parcel 308. There's six-foot stockade fence that runs along that line. And then on the very odd-shaped lot behind Units A, B, C, and D, we have, again, six-foot stockade that basically wraps around parcels 29, well, it's 299 that we basically wrap around. And that screens those abutters from both the building as well as the roadway. Thank you.
Will?
Yeah, I mean, I'm being asked to find that the changes are de minimis. But in, and you've told me verbally, but a plan would show me whether it really was not, not de minimis. And without something to compare it to, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this. I just don't, I, I don't know what I'm voting on. I, I need to see it. I guess what I would do, I, I, I would look at the old plan and say, okay, here's a butter A, and the building was, oh, on the other side of the road. And now, I don't know whether that, that, that building now is, Mr. Freeman, I need to see a plan. So you can tell me whatever you want. I don't care. I need to see a plan. And I would then say to Anna Butter, or I would ask myself, if I was Anna Butter, is this, is this a big change? And it's inexplicable to me how an application for whether something's small or big doesn't include what the prior plan was. It's just inexplicable to me why that wasn't part of the package.
Miss, Miss Madam Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
The plans were submitted. The other plans are of record. It's true, an overlay could have been done. But certainly, we can, I assume that you have screen sharing ability and that Mr. O'Reilly could go over that and explain it. We certainly didn't in any way mean to be presumptuous, but, you know, this grows out of the abutters appeal and are working with them for a long time and with their cooperation to reach something that's satisfactory. So I don't think you need to be concerned about abutters. They're here and they, they have approved this along with us. So if there were, you know, major dramatic changes, you know, they absolutely would need to be compared side to side. But I, I didn't think that that was necessary here. But then again, as I say, John, if you can have, if they let you screen share, you could go through the plan and explain, perhaps even put up the previous plans. So that's, you know, pretty typical of a situation like this, when there's changes that don't really arise to any large level at all, in fact, approved. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair, I do have the original, I thought that you would have had the original plan. So I didn't include those as, as part of the proposal package, but I do have it on my screen. If you can allow me to share my screen.
Sure, sure. That would, that would be helpful. Chris, how do I?
John, I don't know if you had it.
How do I allow Ted to share his screen, Chris? Chris? Hello, Chris. Come back in here.
I, I am not absolutely certain, because I've never shared anything.
I think I'm, I, I can give him permission, but I'm not sure how I do that. Let's see. Ah, wait a minute. Lower hand chat spotlight for everyone. I can allow you to multi-pin, whatever that means.
Madam Chair, I might not be concerned if there's a representation that every butter is also a party to, to the litigation. But if every butter is not a party to the litigation, then, you know, that, that, the fact that, that some abutters have agreed, agree to this doesn't do much for me.
And let me see if Mr. Freeman knows, or Mr. Malone knows the answer to that.
Yeah, the, there was a fourth butter who withdrew, who had been appealed, but withdrew from the appeal. And that, and another butter is the town, a parcel there. There's a, the butter to the east, Chandler Crowell, if I got that name right. He had not been a party to the original appeal. And then there's some abutters to the far north that are not impacted, because that whole segment of the property is not being built upon. But the, you know, I, I can't represent that, that all of the abutters were part of the appeal. They never, didn't appeal the original.
Right.
Madam, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Can we, through you, could we ask Will to clarify, are you asking, is every single a butter, have, you want every single? You want to know if everybody who's involved in the lawsuit?
If it's someone way up in the north, I don't care. No, but I just don't.
You're right.
Everybody involved in the appeal, have they been in agreement? That's what I'm, think you mean, right?
Yeah. No, 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 no. I, I don't. That's why I need to see the plan and compare the names on the appeal to the names, you know, and see, okay, you know, might they not object? The fact that someone didn't appeal the first time around, maybe that's because the closest building was 100 feet away. And, and I don't know, i- is the closest building now 50 feet away or 15 feet away? I don't know.
I think they can answer that question. Yeah.
Madam Chairman, one more thing. Can, if we reach a decision tonight, can that, that decision can be appealed, correct?
Of course.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. To the point by the gentleman concerned about abutters, which again, I understand, and I also understand, I, I assumed there would be screen sharing. You know, I'll, I'll ask John O'Reilly and Ted Malone to confirm what I'm about to say. But there's nothing that's being moved closer to other abutters.
Ah, Ted Malone has started screen sharing. Yay.
Oh, good. So, so again, I, I respect those questions. And again, it's logical, and I apologize again to the, to the gentleman questioning, as well as to all of you, that, that we, we didn't, we didn't mean to be presumptuous. We should have perhaps done the overlay. But in any case, I think you'll be able to understand when Ted goes through this. Thank you.
Okay. Ted, it worked. Thank goodness.
Okay, so, am I unmuted? Yeah.
Yeah, you're on the screen.
Okay, so, if you look at the thumbnail sketch to the lower left, that shows all of the abutters. Can you see my, my?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, the, the appealing, the abutters who were involved in the, in the lawsuit were here, 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 and here. The last one I pointed to is the one who withdrew in the beginning.
So could you just point those out to me again?
Appealing, the, those involved in the settlement are here, here, and here. So they, if you can, you can see their parcel numbers and names on the new plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The fourth initial appellant plaintiff is the one I'm pointing at now, and early in the process, they removed themselves. The, on the, on the proposed plan, so tho- those not involved in the lawsuit were this parcel, basically, this parcel and this parcel. And then, and nor were these, but as you, on the original plan, there was no, no development happening in the back. On your new proposed plan, you can, there is a thumbnail sketch there, and you can see that the this cluster of buildings has moved up about 20 feet here. The only thing that is happening close to this property line is the new emergency vehicle turnaround at the end. And that would be, that, that a butter was part of the appeal and the settlement. The The setback from over here, we we did get relief from setbacks in this area for sideline setbacks. There was a barely a meeting the setback at this location. Sorry. But there was retaining structures that were built all around there. There is no retaining in the new plan. But these these buildings moved further north on the revised plan. But it's the closest one. So the 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 lower two buildings are kind of in this zone. They're moving, they're in the 48. The lowest this 48 line.
Yeah.
That's going to be, that's where the southernmost of this back group is located. So it's further from here, but where it gets closer is far farther north up at the 62 line. So they're, they're, they're closer right here. But it is by about six feet and from the closest that it was going to be. Well, it's just, you, are you, I don't know if you're able to see.
No, no, no. I guess my, just confirm to me that the Wallaces are part of this litigation.
They are.
Okay.
Of the settlement, of the settlement.
I'm, yeah, that's, I'm fine.
And will you see here, the way, the thing they were talking about before, the four units at the bottom and the road just flip-flop. So the units are on one side and the road is on the other now.
No, I, I am, I, I was sorry. I, I apologize for be being so strident. You have answered my concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
So you can see in this plan also just how it, here was the turnaround. And all this construction was happening closer to Payne Hollow.
Yeah.
The change here is that we needed to swing the road that way and up that way in order to get the 10% grade.
Nope, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay. Do you want me to remove screen sharing?
You can remove, you can go ahead and remove screen sharing and thank and bless you for being able to know how to do it.
You, I believe that you enabled me to do it, so.
I don't think I did. I think Chris did. I I won't take any credit for that. I think it's way beyond my skill level. So where was I? So that answered your question, Will. So I'm on to Rita.
I, I am fine.
Rita, do you have any questions? You're muted, Rita.
Peter, mute.
You're muted.
I think I'm okay now. No, that that's fine. I appreciate the explanation that was given and and the question. So again, to state what I had said at the outset, we are, you know, we we believe it's something that is appropriate, is insubstantial. And that a finding to that effect would mean that these changes do become the project plans as to, you know, the changes that have just been shown. Thank you.
Rita, questions?
No questions.
Okay. Andy?
Well, first, I don't, I do have a question, but I just wanted to point out that although I am an attorney as well, I am not related in any way to Peter Freeman. Just in case that ever became an issue.
Yes.
I'm in favor of this. My, my, my only concern is, I have, and I rely, I'm trusting Ms. Attorney Freeman's representation as to what constitutes incident.
Can't hear you. Andy?
Yeah. No?
Yeah.
Can't hear me? Okay. My, my, my point is that I would rely upon the representation that this is not substantial. I'm wondering if if our own attorneys have weighed in on that question.
I can answer that question. The the town council said that in this case, it does not fit any of the, you know, it doesn't fit nicely into any of the categories for substantial or insubstantial. And therefore, it was at the discretion of the board. She did also say that we, in our decision on the original comprehensive permit, we said, minor changes to the approved plans, I, for example, changes that do not materially affect the location of or increase the height or massing of the structures, or increase the number of units contained in the residential buildings, shall be submitted to the building inspector, who shall have the authority to approve such changes as immaterial changes. If the building inspector determines that the proposed changes do not conform to the requirements of the comprehensive permit, he shall so notify the applicant, and the applicant shall either bring the plans into conformance with this decision or seek modifications. So in other words, in the original decision, we put this job on the head of the building inspector. However, despite the boards, what Carolyn says is despite the board's decision granting such authority to the building inspector, the court's order remain place this matter back before the board to consider these modifications. And so the court order prevails. So we, she wanted us to make sure we clarified which units were being repositioned and being moved, which we have done. And the the number of rental units will remain at eight. In the original decision, we were concerned about the proposed grade of the driveway at 12%. But where the applicant proposes to reduce the grade to 10%, I assume the board would consider this to be an improvement. The applicant is not seeking any new waivers from the board. Ultimately, it is a decision for the ZBA to decide whether these changes are substantial or insubstantial. But in my opinion, the board could consider these changes to be insubstantial. That's what town council told us.
I mean, my only, the only thing that I question, and I'm not saying that I'm it is or it isn't substantial, is the flipping of the location of the, some of the units. But regardless, I'm in favor of this. This thing needs to go through. It's been ridiculously hanging around this town for too long. It's, I'm in favor. And if, if there's an appeal and somebody says it's substantial, and so be it.
Trevor?
Yeah, I I initially was nodding my head right along with Will because I, I wanted to ask the exact same question that that he did. We're being asked to compare A to B, but we only have B in front of us. I realized that A was submitted and is in the record somewhere, but it would have been very helpful to have had that in our packets at the outset. I was actually quite surprised when Ted pulled up the screen that, you know, how much shifting of the elements is happening on the site. To me, it seems like there's quite a bit of change in the location of of everything. That being said, all the parts are basically the same. They're just moving around on the site. And I suppose that if the neighbors who are most directly affected agree that this is a better solution, then I don't, I think I want to open the can of worms of of bringing this back to the to the public. So I I do think there's, there's quite a bit going on, but I I would vote in in favor of of it being insubstantial at this point.
And Al, did I, did I get you to give your chance to weigh in?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't sure where, I wasn't sure where I started at this point, so I was a little, so, okay. Is the sense that we are moving to say that these changes are insubstantial?
Yeah, do we just need a simple motion?
I have the motion, so I can read you the motion. I didn't want to be bothered reading both motions if I didn't have to. So that was why I was going to try to, you know, I have, I have town council has given me the motions on how I'm supposed to do this one. So let me read, let me read you the the insubstantial one. The motion should say, motion to find the proposed modifications to the comprehensive permit issued for the for 120 Payne Hollow Road, consisting of reducing the grade of the access drive to 10%, installing a fence along the western property line, and repositioning two building clusters as shown on the plan entitled Proposed Site Plan Revised Parcel 300 Payne Hollow Road, Wellfleet, Massachusetts, prepared by JM O'Reilly Associates, dated October 1, 2021, to be insubstantial changes to be incorporated into a modified comprehensive permit decision. And the the one that finds they're substantial is basically the same, except that it adds that we have to have a public hearing on this on November 4. So.
I move the insubstantial motion.
Okay, and I need a second.
A second.
Okay, and all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, Mr. Malone.
Thank you very much.
We're on to
Thank you very much.
On to chapter 30, maybe?
I have a pre-application for funding due on October 30, and having this in place is will likely make us eligible for the funding round in January. So.
Okay, and we will get you, we, we will be sending a written notice out to you tomorrow on this, because our written notice to you is due on Monday. So.
Oh, okay.
We will try to get it out to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you, Ted. Chris, do we have minutes? I'm sure.
I believe we have
September 20, whatever it was.
I can get my calendar in a second.
By this time of the night, I've long since lost my calendar.
It's not that late, sure.
No, it's that, it's all this paper. It's not the lateness. It's that I do not have an endless task here for all these pieces of paper. Okay, September 26. I need a motion to accept those, 23rd. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
I shall move.
Okay, and Trevor, you want a second? All in favor, I'm just going to say raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All in favor, just raise.
Okay, good night, all. Good night.
Good night, all. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we can turn off the recording, Chris, so I can tell you about the things we have to do next.